Meeting tonight in Danvers and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. We could all stand for the pledge. All right, in the Danvers Public Schools Mission Statement, Danvers Public Schools is a dynamic community of independent learners dedicated to respect, responsibility, creativity, and the pursuit of academic and personal excellence. This meeting is being broadcast on Danvers Community Access Television. And one note for those viewing at home, tonight, the presentation, there is a little issue with our cameras, so you may look askew for the presentation, but please bear with us. And then I just need to ask if anybody in the audience is recording the proceedings. All right, none being said, the reason I am starting the meeting is because this is our reorganizational meeting, and my job is to start the meeting, and from there, the committee will make a motion for the chair.
Mr. Chairman, first of all, I want to thank Gabe for his service as Chair last year. I think he did a great job, and to be pointed out, you and I have had moments, but there have been good moments, so thank you so much. With that, I would like to nominate Mike Shannon to be Chair of the School Committee.
Second. Any discussion? One, thank you for the opportunity to serve as Chair for the last year. It was a great pleasure and great working with all of you. I'm still going to be here, but I think Mike Shannon is a phenomenal candidate and looking forward to the vote and seeing if he's going to accept. Also, I want to thank Mr. Loebz for his service over the past year. Great job as Chair. I agree, Mike's been here for a year and been making some great contributions even in that short amount of time, so I would welcome that. Any further comments?
Before I accept this, which I guess I just did, I want to thank Gabe too for getting into the public education space at that school committee meeting a couple of years ago when he decided to run, and then stepping up and taking the gavel and contributing the way he's contributed, a very positive way to what we're trying to do there, so thank you for all your things.
All right, great. Before we begin the vote, I just would too like to say thank you to Gabe on a personal level, always there for any guidance, coaching, but also a clear, level-headed thought process partner and just somebody who really values what we're doing in Danvers and just a very solid individual and glad to staying aboard and just thoroughly enjoy working with him. Thank you, Gabe. Thank you. All right, at this time, we'll take a vote. The motion is to nominate Mike Shannon to be Chair of the School Committee. All those four?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those negative, there are none. Motion carries. Congratulations, Mike. You are the Chair of the School Committee.
All right. Who are we going for, items of interest to the superintendent?
No, you want, we're still on the School Committee reorganization, Mike, item two.
Oh, there we go.
We've got a few more things to do.
We do. Next order of business is the election of the Secretary of the Committee. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to renominate Eric Crane as Secretary of the School Committee. Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, what I'll say is Eric's been on this committee for a long time, and as he mentioned, this is, my interaction with Eric is probably a big part of why I'm sitting here, but it goes without question, the amount of passion and experience and knowledge that he's had and, you know, knowing that we all equally care about the school and the town, it goes without, it's a great demonstration of just bringing good people together to do good things for the community, so I enthusiastically re-endorse you and nominate you for the Secretary.
Thank you for the kind work, Gabe.
I agree. Eric's historical knowledge is second to none, the value he brings here is extraordinary, and we need to hold on to that.
Yeah, not much more to add, nothing more creative or anything. I think it's, I think you've done a great job with that, and I think the guidance that you're able to provide is even just procedurally to make sure that the meetings go correct. I think, I think you're on point, so I think having you Secretary would be great.
Thank you, Joe. I'm happy to consider you.
So that we're done with the discussions, ready for a vote? Oh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next order of business is the appointment of the school attorney.
I would make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the, and continue to employ the firm of law under Petro as a school attorney.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next order of business is the request the superintendent to check the school committee's liability insurance.
To the Chair, yes, I'm working on that, and I'll have the recommendation, but everything as last noted is up to date.
And lastly, to establish a time, place, and regular meeting day for meetings. I believe the fact calendar is set correct?
Continue with the second Monday.
So, continue, second Monday, 6:30, right here in this room. Fantastic. And we also need to authorize a member as the primary and secondary signatory on bill sheets. We need to make a motion for that?
I get to, that's the power of the Chair?
All right. Josh, Josh, I know you're the primary, you're the primary signatory right now. Would you like to continue on doing that?
I'd be happy to serve in that capacity, yeah.
Thank you. And Eric, you're the secondary. Would you like to continue doing that? Thank you very much. And Chairman will appoint a legislative liaison and may also organize the committee of subcommittees. I think our subcommittees are in good shape right now, we just kind of went through that, and our political liaison, is you Eric, correct? Legislative, my bad. And so, if you have no objection, I'll keep it that way. Great. That's all set. Now we can move on to items of interest to the superintendent, School Committee and Community.
Okay, this time, if it's okay for the Chair, we do have, from the community aspect, we have CPAC representative, Julia D. Filippo, going to present an update.
Hi, everyone. It's good to see you tonight and report all the work we've been doing to get CPAC up and going and active in the community. I'm excited to announce that we found out last Friday that Danvers School District was accepted by the Federation for Children with Special Needs to be part of the Apple Institute this coming year. Apple stands for Advancing Parent Professional Leadership and Education, and this is an initiative to develop collaborative relationships with families between CPACs and the school districts and really build a basis for the future to work together. We met with, CPAC met with the Department of Student Services for our first monthly meeting in May. It's very clear that we have a lot of shared interests that we can collaborate together, and I think this is the perfect way to get it started. We have a pretty big team, so the CPAC Board members, myself, Jen Corsino, and Melissa DiAmilio will be part of this, from Danvers Public Schools, Christina Ryan and Angelique DeCosta. School Committee Member Sean Doherty is going to be part of it as well, and Amy Valanquas, who's a parent in the Danvers Public Schools, and Mark Hoffman, they're both also Accessibility Commission members, will join us. And then, lastly, we're hopeful that Danvers Rec will be successful in hiring the new Inclusion Specialist for their after-school programs, and we're hopeful that person can join us as well, as we look at, you know, really the need for adaptive and inclusive after-school programs in the school system. We also recently updated our bylaws, which you can find on our website. We really wanted to emphasize more of an inclusive membership, and the bylaws before this emphasized membership was among caregivers who had children with IEPs or 504s. We would like any member of the community to be part that's interested in, you know, finding out about special ed, being a stakeholder, so we did broaden the membership to include that. We also clarified some procedures around elections, around communication, transitions, just to ensure transparency, accountability, and the future of CPAC as well. We are holding our first, or probably the last, community CPAC meeting on Thursday night, May 22nd. It's going to be virtual from 6:30 to 7:30, and we'll share the Zoom link probably this week and throughout next week as well. And then we just want to remind people that we have a new email address. It is thedanverscpac@gmail.com. You'll probably see it 100 times because we just want you to email the right place, but yeah, sort of where things are at. Thanks.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you for that update, and thank you for the work that your committee's done. It's impressive. Anyone else from the community want to bring items of interest to us? Paul, you, you good? It's highly up to you. Okay.
Paul, Paul, I'm Chair of the HRIC Committee, and I just found out that your next meeting will be after our Pride event. Our Pride event will be held June 7th on a Saturday, and prior to that, we're going to have a kickoff meeting or event flag raising at the Danvers Police Department on June 5th, which is a Thursday, 5:00 p.m., somewhat similar to what we do with the main event on the Saturday, raising activities for youngsters if they want a, the police department will be serving pizza, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. All right, and on Saturday at the library, of course, the difficulty this year is that unfortunately, it's school graduation, but we wish everyone that's graduating a nice, sunny, warm day. Gabe, congratulations. I do have to tell you one funny story about this guy. Not going to sit down.
I'm sorry, we're out of time, Paul, but thank you.
You're out of time?
No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Never mind.
No, please, tell the story.
The first, the first time I didn't meet him, I became aware of him was when, a few years back, we were having issues with situations in town, and we were having a HRIC meeting about all the things that were going on. He gets up, and I, I thought the walls were going to cave in, the Tumi Room, and he was very forceful and right about a lot of things, and then when he turned around and was elected to the school committee, I thought it was a very positive thing, and I congratulate you on the work you did in the past three years, and also the fact that you decided to come back and run for reelection. Thank you very much for what you do for us in the town. Thank you, gentlemen. Any questions at all about the Pride and, okay. Eric, you still going to be our liaison at times?
Absolutely. I pride to be lifelong president.
I know Gabe is busy, busy, busy. Yeah. Someone will cover you, okay? All right, thanks a lot, guys. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Paul. Any commendations? Any, any items of interest to take note of in schools? Commendations, anything?
No, I think we're good.
If I could, Chair, I just want to mention one commendation. The Light in the Night Purple event took place last Wednesday. It was outstanding, led by our Danvers Cares Coalition. As you know, we turned over the leadership this year, and the event was outstanding. A great evening for unity, supporting recovery, and it was just great to see the community together.
Thank you. Ready to move on?
Yes, sir.
Anyone else in the audience have any comment at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on. Items of interest to the superintendent? Oh, we just, we just, yep, yep, to the superintendent, student rep.
Thank you. So we have some great updates tonight. We'll start with our student representatives' report, Julia and Ollie.
Hello, everyone. So tonight, we're just going to give some updates from the high school. The first thing we're going to talk about is what happened at the end of April. Our DECO organization went to Orlando, Florida for their international competition. We had two groups that placed top 10 out of 25,000 students. Those students were Kenzie Work and Gianna Ferraro. They placed fifth in their competition, and Charlie Morris, Kevin Hullett, and Darius Chung, who placed sixth in their Business Solutions project. The next thing was one of our singing groups, which was Vocal Alliance. They took a trip to Hartford, Connecticut at the end of April, and they performed at the 2025 National Association for Music Education. Vocal Alliance is a small and selective social justice singing group that mainly performs pieces with messages about acceptance, love, and equality, and they were chosen to perform at this convention, and this weekend was a really great opportunity for the group to perform in front of an audience as well as publicize their music. Two really good things that happened at the end of April.
Speaking of the end of April, oh my gosh, that was loud. So we came back from April break, which started quarter four. The biggest difference is all the seniors started, uh-uh, but most of us seniors started their senior internship, it takes up their fourth quarter, so our third quarter doubled as our fourth quarter, and we don't have our classes anymore, except AP classes, which I'll get to after. But we do our internships just for like people to get kind of a head start and get some experience in the field that they're interested in. For me, I'm just helping out my journalism teacher. I'm planning on minoring in journalism, so that's kind of my connection, but our journalism class has got a website, theflyingonion.org, so I've kind of been helping out with that. But some people are at like hospitals, I know someone that's down at the State House helping out with one of our state representatives. There's a whole broad variety of internships. We have an internship fair at the end of the month, Friday, I don't know what the date is, I think it's at like 9 o'clock to 11. So yeah, if you're interested in seeing like what some people have been up to, you can go to that. And then my last point is, so not a lot going on this month, but the biggest thing is people have been kind of getting prepared for AP exams, so this is the second and pretty much final week of AP exams. I was fortunate enough to have all three of my AP exams last week, so I'm all done with school, but some people still have theirs. And yeah, that's all I have.
I went to the internship fair last year. My guy was a senior, and it was fantastic what I saw, so enjoy that.
Julia, this is your last session with us, right? You're graduating?
That is true. The last meeting is after I graduate, so it's my last one.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
Well, thank you for all your contributions.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, we appreciate you doing, thank you.
And where are you off to next year, Julia?
So I'm attending the George Washington University, which is down in DC. I majored in political science. I'm super excited, I love DC. Yeah.
Awesome.
I don't know if you know, there's a, there is a, Danvers Alum is one year ahead of you that goes there as well.
Katherine Kelter, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do.
Congratulations. Thank you. Great job reporting all year. All right, the next recognition tonight is Highlands. I'd like to call Principal Brenski and his team, come forward. And I know we have a number of Highlands here representing, as well as our school nurse team, just the, the reason the recognition is tonight is the quick action of the Highlands team saved one of our second graders last week in the cafeteria, and I'll let Principal Brenski talk about this, but the family, Evan Witwicky, grade two, and his parents, who are pictured, they're not able to make it tonight, they're out of town, but they came in last Friday to give thanks to the team and Principal Brenski's team, and it was great to meet them and see how grateful they are for the quick actions, and what has impressed me the most with the group is certainly they're very humble, they're very professional, and just, we're just so grateful for their actions in a really stressful situation, and I don't want to take away all of your thunder, Principal Brenski, but just want to say thank you to you for your steady leadership in that school, that has created a great culture there. So I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Bauer, and to the Chair, thank you. It, with the Danvers Public Schools, the great thing about the Danvers Public Schools is the opportunities for professional development, but a lot of that professional development revolves around safety, and, you know, many times, and luckily, we don't have to use these skills or these drills that we do, whether it be safety care or fire drills or whatever. The other day at Highlands, the situation necessitated that we use CPR, and staff reacted quickly and professionally, and it was pretty amazing, and I was extremely impressed, and I was very grateful that the training was provided because they actually attended the training just a few days before the incident. And I'd like to introduce the group to you. First, Pam DeSanto, an instructional aide. Benu Carney, who performed the Heimlich, an instructional aide. Lisa Timmons, who was also present and reacted calmly and professionally, and of course, Janelle Maroney, our school nurse, who is just, the four of them are phenomenal. Jen Vassett, who was also present in the cafeteria that evening, is unable to attend this evening, but I can't thank everyone enough for their quick and professional reaction, and also the opportunities that we get to attend these professional developments is also just important, so thank you for that. That's pretty much it. If you have any questions, and with us this evening is also some other staff from Highlands to support the group, and also the nurses who provided the training. It was great work. Thank you. Thank you.
We can do that, yeah? You want to get to the chair?
Yeah.
That's the end, so I'm going to do it.
What can be better than saving a life?
If I could just add, I know that we have our team of our outstanding nurses that are here tonight too, because as Principal Brenski pointed out, they came to us really with the idea of offering CPR classes throughout the year, and they've organized it, and it's really through their hard work and dedication, and, you know, the irony is unbelievable with the group receiving the training, but they've been doing this all year, and John is rightful for pointing out to Mary Wormers, who, you came with the idea, she helped pave the way, but you've done the work, so thank you, and I believe we had Nurses Week last week and School Nurse Week this week, I believe? Well, we'll say it is. Thank you.
Thank you for what you do. Thank you for what you do.
All right, we're going to shift gears, and we have a performing arts update. So we have Alex Grover, who is our Performing Arts six-twelve director. And he, remember last year, there was a lot of changes that took place here at the middle school, and Alex provided a lot of updates, so I asked him to come back just to say how have things been in this last year? So we have a few slides, and take it away, Mr. Grover.
I wanted to start off by just like, I was really interested in how we're going to do this. So it's been years tonight, really, and why, uh, what we're doing in the performing arts. It's a part of our day-to-day and our process and what we, I have a form after. Before I get started with the presentation, I want to give a little bit of context for my positionality here in the district and in the performing arts itself. I'm sure some of you have heard me say it before, but I've been working in the district with my thirty-six years as the choral director. And since COVID, I've been fortunate to be in a period of, of leadership roles right after COVID or kind of during COVID. I've worked in there a lot on social emotional learning and bringing some concrete programming for SEL to the high school. And now that program is flourishing because of the work of many and being given the opportunity to be in a position to make some whole-scale change and get to know more people in the district and more of my colleagues has really allowed me to be in a better position for moving the performing arts forward. And that's been my latest work the past couple of years. Again, grateful to the central office for providing the flexibility a little bit with my schedule to be able to do some six through twelve work in the performing arts. We still have a long way to go, but I'm really excited and passionate about this work. And I appreciate again the opportunity to speak tonight. Lastly, before I start, I brought one of my colleagues here, Mr. Jeff Daniels, who's the band director. And as I said before, the performing arts is, you know, filled with passionate people and is the work of many. And so him being here tonight is, again, a symbol of the fact that we are all in this together. And it's not just Mr. Daniels and myself. There are many, many educators in this district who, you know, wear their heart on their sleeve when it comes to the performing arts. And, you know, I know we had a lot go on last year here at the middle school with some opportunities, problems and opportunities. And so I think it's now time to sort of bring some things together a lot more. And hopefully, by the end of this presentation tonight, we can be a little bit more on the same page about that. So Danvers can be an even better district in terms of the priorities and things that we're doing to move forward in the performing arts. So thank you, and I just have a few short slides. And if you have any questions at the end, feel free to answer them for you. So we're going to start with just some highlights and achievements. And this slide here is really just a snapshot. You know, I could have had five slides of just, you know, the things that we do within the performing arts here. But I picked a few of them. That's not to diminish others, but we've been doing some great stuff in the performing arts here in Danvers, and I just thought I'd share some of them with you. Ollie did a really nice job articulating one of them, which is the first bullet on the list. We had one of our vocal groups perform at the National Association for Music Education's Eastern Division Conference, which was twelve states of music educators, the big conference that happens every two years. And they were accepted to perform at that. And there's a thing called a concert hour, and, you know, whoever is walking around in the conference or decides to go to it can see a group from Danvers, Massachusetts, perform. And there's other groups performing at different points as well, and that was something they were selected to. But one of the main reasons why that bullet is up there is because that wasn't the only representation that we had at that conference. There were two elementary school teachers who presented their expertise at that conference for different educators from these twelve states. We were able to go to one of the sessions that Griff Gall and Jen Dennett presented together, and it was a lot of fun. And so there are people from up and down the East Coast that are learning from educators here in Danvers. Another highlight from that conference is we had one student, Piper Brett, from the high school that was selected to the conference's mixed chorus. And they were rehearsing Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and then at the performance on Sunday, which our group also went to support as well. So we were really well represented down in Hartford, Connecticut, and a great, you know, PR and substantive experience for our Danvers educators and students. So we have performed at MICA the past three years. The band has performed at it. That's the Massachusetts Instrumental and Choral Conductors Association. This year, the band was performing at it for the third time and received a gold. The chorus performed for the first time and received a silver. We also have been hosting that festival here, thanks to the hard work of Mr. Daniels back there. He brought, he's very well-connected in the Massachusetts educator circuit. And, you know, us having Danvers as a host site is really kind of putting us on the map in terms of the quality of, you know, operations that we have here as well as the strong interest in music. We also host the ICHSA International Championship of High School Acapella Competition. We had hosted it a lot about five years ago, like a string of four in a row. We took a little bit of a break, and now we're hosting it again. A major piece of work that we've been doing over the past few years is sort of streamlining the boosters at the secondary level. And that's a nonprofit group that has been rebranded to Danvers Performing Arts Collaborative, and it continues to expand in all facets of our performing arts program. We have different subcommittees for marching. We have different subcommittees for our concert music season for band and chorus. And then we have a different arm for the theater productions. And so that's really creating an infrastructure that allows the parent group. And, you know, we're hoping that even it expands to community members as well who want to be involved that don't even necessarily have, still have a student in, in the schools, that we're open to anyone coming and helping support this infrastructure so that the performing arts can thrive here in Danvers. Next year, the music department is traveling to Orlando, Florida, to Disney World to do a special event they have there called the Soundtrack Sessions. And so it's not typical in terms of when we go somewhere to travel in that we're not doing like an outward-facing performance, but we are going and working with professionals from Disney to do a recording session. So the band will go in and learn music right there and then record it and have a keepsake. And the chorus will go in and work with the professionals, record it, have a keepsake. So it's a little bit of a different spin on our travel that we're doing next year to kind of keep some variety. And then our sort of biggest thing that we've done in terms of programming this year is our private lesson program. We have over forty students enrolled in our new private music lessons program. And, you know, Dan and I worked closely on this last year on all the logistics to get it up and running sort of above board. And we've hired five instructors in their different areas of expertise. And after school on Monday, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays, students and teachers are coming in and out of the high school and getting private instruction on their instruments. So again, doing things to improve the infrastructure and the foundation for the performing arts here, not just, you know, it's a good performance here, and that teacher's doing a good job, and that student went to that conference. We really want to do things that are laying that groundwork so that our groups and our experiences can go the extra mile and have something to latch on to when they're older and even out of the Danvers Public Schools. So those are some highlights and achievements. Again, there are so many that I could list, but I just picked out those few because I think they're a great snapshot of what we're doing here. I gave Holton Richmond Drama Club its own slide because, because of the presentation that was given last year and the events that went on last year here at the school. We're in a much better place with the Holton Richmond Drama Club. We have a whole new team of directors that were, they're internal, but they're working in addition to their day jobs to put on the theater productions here at the middle school. And that team did a great job this year, especially in that challenging transition. So we're really proud of them. They had two successful productions, Newsies Junior, the musical, and then Rochambeau, the Drama Fest entry. They just received, the Drama Fest just received a silver at the festival, and we had three students get individual awards. And then this is something that we've been wanting to do for a little while now and that I mentioned that we would do last year, and that's moved the musical production to the high school. This just isn't a space that you can put a real quality production on. As you can see, we're having a, you know, meeting in here, so it's, you know, just as much for that as it is for, you know, performing arts on the stage. And so we're really, really fortunate to work with a lot of different stakeholders to get the musical up at the high school. And then lastly, on the drama club topic, this is a work in progress. There were hiccups and things that we learned, and, you know, the communication took a little bit to get up and running, and we recognize all that. And, you know, we take note of it. But overall, I think it went really well, and we're still working, again, to build, build those structures and that foundation so that, you know, we can move forward in a real way so that the students get the experience that they deserve here at Holton Richmond and in the performing arts. So that's the update on that. And then this slide could have also been probably like six slides, but it's good that it can be concise because that's kind of what we need with this work. Over the past two years, during early release time, again, grateful for the collaboration between the performing arts staff and the central office to give us some more time during early releases to meet as a pre-K through twelve music department. That wasn't happening before. I could count on my hand the amount of times that I had had a formal meeting with other music teachers in the district, like over my thirteen years up until last year. And to be quite frank, that's kind of unheard of. For, you know, a department, like a performing arts department and a music department, not to meet, you know, at least even like once or twice a year, is not how you're going to get the best out of your teachers. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later. So again, really, really excited that we got to meet twice in twenty-three, twenty-four. We had four meetings this year. Hopefully, we can request similar or more time for twenty-five, twenty-six. And the work over the past two years has been using an adaptive and distributive leadership model to be able to put some pen to paper with strategic initiatives. And then those strategic initiatives this year were fleshed out and developed into a draft three-year strategic plan for the performing arts. And the quick hits in terms of the buckets that we're going to be working under, and I think these really do mirror our, our new strategic plan as well because I've seen a lot of overlap in terms of the strategic plan for the district. We want to cultivate creativity and autonomy. We want to increase accessibility and equity. The arts in SEL, preparing students for the future, you know, like our Portrait of a Graduate initiative, professional collaborative, professional collaborative and empowerment for our educators. And then just, you know, the PR piece, highlighting the strength of arts in Danvers. Also, Mary, in the middle of the year, gave me a heads up about an arts grant that was through DESI. And it's called the Arts and Cultural Vitality Grant. So we have a team of nine art and music teachers, you know, who have met. Tomorrow, actually, will be our eighth time meeting. We met seven times up until now. Tomorrow's the eighth meeting. And we are gathering artifacts to rate indicators that DESI has put forward for, you know, how an arts, a district that's thriving in the arts would look. And so tomorrow is a big meeting for us, and we're going to be looking at, you know, an abundance of indicators, you know, and hopefully rating them to be attempting, effective, supported, and sustaining. And those have definitions that, you know, DESI has given us. But the short version is, you know, where are we as a district with arts and culture? And I think when we're done with this work, that, you know, I'd be able to come up here and have some real data to give you because, you know, I can only speak to a small piece of it. You know, now we got nine teachers from art and music really sinking their teeth into, you know, what's going on here in Danvers with the arts. And we're excited to see what that, the outcome of that. And I'll be happy to share that with you once it's completed. So this kind of brings every, this slide brings everything kind of to a point. And this is very much, you know, my opinions based on kind of being a little bit more on the inside the past couple of years and having a close relationship with administration. And it's also what I've seen over the past thirteen years. You know, I think a challenge that we face here in Danvers is treating the arts as a unique entity, right? So a lot of the time, what I've seen is that the performing arts and the arts kind of get lumped in with everything out, with everything else. And, you know, the arts educators will be at a meeting and will be looking at MCAS data. And, you know, we have three of us maybe sitting there, and like we could be doing, you know, real work when it comes to, you know, all this stuff that I've been talking about. And that's not to put down the MCAS or anything like that. And it's good for us to be aware of that sort of thing. But it's sort of just been the general rule that when we have professional development, you know, we just kind of get like plopped in here, and like it's not thought about that, you know, the music teachers could be doing something to like build that community and that curriculum on, on their own so that we could make things better for students. And, you know, a great example of that is something I already mentioned. You know, we have two elementary music teachers. That's not to say that we don't have like five great elementary music teachers. We have two that just presented at a seemingly national conference. And, you know, I don't know how many times they've actually like shared what they do with, you know, the rest of the staff, and, you know, there's not an awareness of that. So I guess at the end of the day, we need to find ways to be a lot more collaborative. And, you know, the way that I encompass that in that first challenge here is that there needs to be a better consensus built between, you know, administration and teachers. You know, we're starting with it now, and I love the relationship that I've had with Mary for the past two, three, five years on all the work that we've done together. Dan's been great the past couple of years coming in, and, you know, I get a meeting whenever we need it on some of these major initiatives. But, you know, for, for these administrators, the arts is just another thing on the long list of really important things in education. And we don't have a point person. Like, I'm up here advocating, but, you know, I'm only advocating like kind of in a half sense because I've just been up in, up here six through twelve, right? So what's going on with elementary? We have a teacher leader down, down there. But we really need someone that is a director of visual and performing arts to be a liaison, a support system, and an advocate for us. And then this next piece about instructional leadership, I've kind of talked about already. But we have such talent and passion in the arts here, and it's extraordinary, but there's a ceiling to it. You know, we have to let our strong teachers thrive more and our less experienced teachers gain access to support and guidance. And this sentence, I wrote, I wrote this out because I wanted to be kind of in ink for you to see. But all teachers yearn for, or importantly, need true accountability and high expectations for instructional practices. That's not happening. You know, the last sentence I have on there is arts teachers should also be evaluated by someone in their field. You know, they have someone doing, supervising them who like couldn't tell you the first thing about what they're teaching. And I know that generally happens across the board. You have administrators. You have administrators who, like, English wasn't their thing and they're going into an English classroom. But it comes back to what I was talking about. The arts does need to be treated as a specific entity. And it goes into my last point, which is the conclusion to all this is, our enrollment is down here. If we want to be doing things that are bringing like people in and are a motivating factor or, you know, enrolling in the Danvers Public Schools and connecting with the Danvers Public Schools, the administrators, teachers, students, and community, they need more, they want more than relying on the pride and praise for an individual performance, a project or an event. We get awesome praise all the time. "Oh, good job with that performance." "Oh, this person came to our event." Great, you know, we went to that conference in Connecticut, but everybody here is ready for more than that. Because, you know, we've had teachers here who've been in the district for 20 years and never had any kind of real, real infrastructure as to let them spread their wings so that we can make things better for students and better for the community. So, it's that last sentence there. "We're ready for systemic learning, progress, and achievement." And, again, I have Jeff here who spends all hours of the night with marching band and all the things that he does. You know, we hired these new people to do the Holton Richmond job this year with theater who are, you know, in the season of it, you know, staying until six o'clock after they taught kindergarten for the whole day. And, you know, they should be recognized not just by good job at the performance, but by things that show them that there's a real support system here in Danvers. And, you know, it's not going to happen overnight. You know, I know the reality of budget and resources and time is not to be scoffed at. But, I think with the people that we have here, with the passion of the students, that there's a real opportunity and I'm more than happy to help with it. I know there's a lot more other people are happy to help with it as well. So, thanks for the time to talk about it tonight.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I'll just make a quick comment. First of all, your passion's fantastic. I love, I love the passion. You can, you can feel it. And, just as a parent of a newsie from, I guess it was the winter, you know? What we, this was our first exposure. I mentioned it right after the, the performance, but the, I guess the, the culture of the group that was there was so welcoming for my daughter as a first time performer in there. And it was just such a nice feeling to see all the kids welcomed each other and as an inclusive group and, and it was just, you know, I think overall, just a great, that was my first experience to it. So, I mean, that's all I can really speak to at this point, but we're going to be, see more continued, I guess, exposure to this. But I, I just think overall, the arts program is, sometimes takes a backseat to athletics around in, in school systems, but I think this is just such a great program that you guys have built here. So, you know, I just thank you for what you're doing right now.
Thanks very much. I appreciate the analogy to athletics as well because it's something that I didn't put on my slides, but I wanted to mention. You know, I, I do think it's a relevant juxtaposition. You know, we have great athletic programs here. I grew up as a student athlete. I was a three-sport athlete for two years and then went down to two sports in my junior and senior year, and it was always tough juggling both, but it really made me the well-rounded person I am today. But, you know, here, in terms of administration, we have an athletic director and associate athletic director. That's two people that like solely work on, you know, the structures and athletics. We're getting there with the performing arts, but we're, it's not necessarily equitable in terms of, you know, supervisory duties or, you know, administrative duties. And so I think that we need to go there in order to like get the arts up to not be taking a backseat.
Mr. Chair. Thanks for, for presenting, Alex. And, yeah, I mean, to me, the arts, like athletics in some ways, it's a way to connect students to the school. There are lots of students, it was this way when I was there, it was this way, everything is here. Daughters were here, it's always been thus, that there are some students that if there wasn't a performing arts program, you would lose them potentially in one way or another. It's the fact that they have this thing that they love and this thing that they can do that keeps them connected to the schools. My experience with you through the past many years has been, yeah, you have passion. You have passion for what you do, but you also have passion, I think, for the value of an arts program. And I can tell from tonight's presentation, a passion for wanting to see greater things for the program. And I don't want to quite say a passion to see more respect for the program, but I don't know that that's a bad way to phrase it either. And I really respect that. I think you pointed out the issues that come up when you're talking about what, you know, budget issues and whatnot, and there are unfortunately lots of districts that have had to lose athletics, had to lose performing arts, and I think it's safe to say that we'll never reach that point. But, that doesn't mean there's not more that we can do within the, the resources that we have because what you're doing and your colleagues are doing is important. And so especially the idea of giving you collaborative time, allowing more time to work and plan, sort of a whole curriculum. But I, I know what you want to accomplish. We want to build something that'll be sustainable from K through 12, make a difference to kids, attract kids, better programs, something that could attract students to stay at the end of time. I get it. And I think we should have whatever support that we can give you in that effort. The finance part won't always be easy. I don't, can't promise you we'll have a director next year, but I get what your goal is and I appreciate it.
Great. Thank you so much. And if I can jump in again, I think if we can get that infrastructure there, then, you know, things like the challenge of last year don't happen, right? You know, that, that didn't happen, that was nobody's, one person's fault, you know, like sort of everything coming to a head with the Holton Richmond Drama Club. But it was just a lack of communication, a lack of structure. And, you know, again, you can't point the finger at one person, but if we had had a system in place, then, you know, oversights like, you know, certain hires and, you know, certain reallocations can have a bigger conversation, right? And so, I think that's, while last year was tough, I think it also is an opportunity to highlight what, you know, opportunities we have here.
You, Alex, your point's well taken, and as you know, I have three, three kids in the performing arts, one under Ron Passins and two with you all. And I've never left a bad performance. I could say that in all honesty. But I hear you saying it could be better if the infrastructure was in place. So I thank you for bringing that to our attention. Because performing arts, we're very big in our family. It cost me a lot of time and a lot of money, but it was well spent. And if, if, if a student can get up in front of an auditorium of people and perform like that, then I think they can almost do anything. And, you know, our guy walked into college this year, not looking to be involved as he was in high school, but be, looking to play his music, be part of the pep band, be part of the symphony. And, you know, within two weeks, he's got 30, 40, 50 friends. Makes that transition a lot easier, and he always has that confidence, they have that confidence. And I know there's a whole host of kids out, you've been, the performing arts impact so many kids, and I know a lot of them. And if parents are listening, I urge your parents, yes, let your kids play sports, let your kids go to other clubs, but let them explore the performing arts as well. Just a whole nother group of kids that they connect with, and what you take away, you can't place a value on it. So, thank you for bringing this to our attention. I think this conversation should continue. And, yeah, let's, let's just make it better.
Appreciate the time, everyone.
Thanks. Thank you, Alex. And Mr. Daniels, thank you for being here tonight. All right, we're going to shift gears and we have Mary Beth Berry providing an update for our Danvers DEEP, our Danvers Educational Enrichment Partnership and all the great things that are happening.
Good evening, everyone. Mary Beth Berry, current president of DEEP, the Danvers Educational Enrichment Partnership. I'd just like to thank the school committee and Superintendent Bauer for inviting me here this evening to give an update on DEEP. As many of you know, DEEP is a nonprofit organization that was started back in the early 1990s when the community saw a need to help the Danvers Public Schools support different initiatives that were not covered by the town budget. Over the course of the years, DEEP has raised multiple amounts of funds to help support students and teachers in the Danvers Public Schools by enriching their educational experiences. We, one way that we do that is by providing teacher grants. I don't know if you'd like, I don't know who's, yep, there we go. So, one way is by teacher grants, and each year, we ask teachers to submit grants to our, our grant committee. Those grants, we look for innovative applications. We also help with improving technology in the classrooms and providing unique learning opportunities that not only give students a competitive edge today, but in the future. Hands-on learning, DECA is one of them as well. We have supported the performing arts in the, in past years, hope to do more in the future as well. But in addition to the opportunities that we provide for students, or I shall say, the, one of the ways that we do provide opportunities for students is through the volunteerism of our board. Our executive board is made up of a vice president, Ben Thomas, our grants coordinator, Murray Matt, treasurer Michelle Keith, and secretary Angela Chumas. And then we have board of directors, folks that have served as executive board members in the past, Glenn Buchi, Gaila Bartlett, and Richard Stony. When I, after elementary school, after my children progressed up here to middle school, so in elementary school, I was involved with PAC, served as president, vice president, cultural enrichment coordinator. We got to the middle school, there wasn't a PAC and there was less need for parents to go into the classroom. So those parents, my executive board, minus Ben, those folks came with me from Riverside. I brought them along on the journey when we went to a DEEP meeting and their board was in transition and they needed new leadership. So of course I said, sure, we can help out. 10 years later, I'm still here and my children have now graduated the Danvers Public Schools and one has graduated college. Why am I still here? I'm here because, or I'm here with my board because we still care about the Danvers Public Schools and we believe in the education that our students get here. My treasurer, her child went to middle school and then went on to Bishop Fenwick. But she, because she lives in town here and, again, being a friend and supporter of the schools, came along on the journey with us. So I do want to thank them for their support for 10 years. It is a long time to be volunteering and not have children in the school, but still have the passion for it. Going back to DEEP and how we raise our funds, we do have some, well, it's just, our fundraising includes our memberships. We offer memberships for family for $20, individual for 10, community membership, our sponsor is $100, and corporate goes from $250 to $1,000. We host special events. We, in the past, have done a ball, a wine tasting. We've done dining for dollars events this year and community events. We also accept monetary and kind donations from local businesses, alumnis, retirees, community members, and programs where we do save a seat. Folks can purchase a auditorium, a plaque for an auditorium chair, and we do the Currents Cares Program. One particular community member made a significant donation, I would say probably close to 10 years ago, and that was Philip Morris when he donated the funds to complete the high school football or stadium, the field. He also made a contribution of $250,000, two of those, one to DEEP and one to the Friends of Danvers Recreation. That fund, or those monies, we earmark specifically for DECA because Mr. Morris is a self-made businessman, and those funds help us help support DECA. Over the last five years, DEEP has awarded almost, or yeah, a little over $100,000 in DEEP grants. So as you can see, 2020 was almost $24,000. In '21, because of COVID, lots of things were in flux, so we decided we would just give $2,500 to each school in the district for them to, to use however they needed to. And then progressed further down into '22, '23. And then in '24 and '25, you see there's quite a drop in what our contribution was. But that, looking back on that, applications are similar, but what teachers were asking for, the, the financial part of it, wasn't as much as some of those other years. You know, each year is different and we have a grant committee that goes through these applications because it's not just, you know, we're not just writing a check for like, you know, 20 applications. We're going through it, we're reading for the thoughtfulness of it. If you can see in that picture right there, this year, we supported a request from the Danvers High Technology Department for a replacement of a tool that they use in the shop class. It's a Festool Domino XL handheld mortizing machine. So, at the open house that was recently had, DEEP was there welcoming folks into the building. I did take the opportunity to walk around and I saw Mr. San Germano, and I wanted to see what that tool was, which is in the middle of that door on the table. That tool helped make that door that those students are standing next to. The original tool is this huge piece of machinery that weighs like at least a ton, if not more, supposedly, to move around. So, to enhance and help the technology department, there are other things that they'd like to be able to purchase and, and upgrade to. And in the past, we've also done a 3D printer for the technology department. They still have that, but that's not quite where we're at anymore. Technology has changed. So, I did speak with him, we talked about some things for the future, and we'll see where we can go with that. But, so again, the quality of the teacher grants, again, we look for innovative, high-quality, thoughtful, connect to current curriculum, benefiting a large number of students, technology, and depending on the requests, the technology requests usually will always have to go through our director of technology, Mr. Sullivan, to make sure it can work with everything else. In addition to the teacher grants, like I previously spoke, we are a major sponsor of DECA. Every year, we make a monetary donation that goes to help support the DECA students, whether it's through creating their boards that they use at the presentations. I don't know if you've ever seen the kids present, but those boards cost a lot of money each, and they use those at states and international competition. We also, over the last least five years, have seen a greater need for financial support for students to attend these conferences. It is a very expensive piece of the program for them, and some parents or families have multiple children that do it same time. Last year, I had a parent come up to me after I spoke here and was so thankful to help support his son going to ICDC because without DEEP's support, he would not have been able to go. And again, I know our, our DECA coordinator would not have let that happen, but DEEP was able to help make that happen easier than it would have been for him to fundraise on his own. So this year, the Falcon's Nest, well, I think, I believe it was a group that placed at ICDC, they were running the school store and they asked and wrote a grant for themselves for a heat press. This was an outside request. The heat press was going to allow them to make their own apparel. Obviously, they have to purchase the T-shirts and sweatshirts, but they would be able to make their own imprints on the shirts, cutting down the cost of an outside vendor, thus making it possible for them to make more profit. Because what they sell in the school store goes to the DECA group. So, it was a no-brainer. It was a $5,000 piece of an equipment, or maybe a little less, but we were able to give them that money. They purchased it and then they were able, they made T-shirts for the DEEP spelling bee this year. Usually, I use an outside vendor, but this year I used them to make the T-shirts for us, which had, it was great for the students to learn how to do it, and it was great working internally. Because when they were done, I said, okay, just bring them down to the curriculum office. So that worked out. And they also And they also made their T-shirts for when they went to ICDC. And this year, our sponsorship, this year and last year, because of the number of students participating in DECA, we went from a $5,000 line item to $10,000. Costs go up. I believe it costs at least $1,500 a student to go to Orlando this year, and when they have to go to California, it's so much more as well. So $10,000 is a lot of money, but when you divide that by over 200 students, it's not as much, but we're happy to be able to contribute to it. Why wouldn't we give, you know, you got $250,000, why don't you give 50? Well, the goal is for this, that account to last for years to come. So those monies are in investments, and we are doing it very conservatively, but we have an investment company that we meet with twice a year to make sure that we're doing what we need to do to keep those funds there. Over the years, fundraising has been challenging for all groups, but it's even that much more difficult for us, because we're competing with every single booster, every, you know, organization in town. So we, this year, we did not do a wine tasting. It takes a lot of effort and energy, and decided that we were going to take a break from that. We are looking at potentially, and there have been talks, a pickleball tournament, something different, something a community, you know, all, everyone in the community can participate with, so, you know, we'll let everyone know when that happens. But in addition to DECA, we also support events and programs in the community. We're a sponsor and coordinator of the HRMS Spelling Bee, the Step Up for Colleen Ritzer 5K, again, the DECA program, Band and Chorus, Danvers High School Credit for Life. We have given seed money to the high school and middle school school stores to get them up and running, and we support the DEEP Breakfast of Champions that happens every year, where we honor not only our sponsors, but our retiring teachers and staff in the Danvers Public Schools. And we have champions that we honor as well, folks that have contributed to the Danvers Public Schools in some way that is greater, and again, this is a very small thing to honor them at a breakfast, but these are folks that have really contributed to who Danvers Public Schools, who they are, who we are. As always, we're looking for new members. Again, I, yeah, been in it on 10 years. I'm not necessarily needing to stay, but we are looking for folks to come. Our meetings happen usually the third Wednesday of the month. We are now meeting at 7:45, yes, 7:45 at Danvers High School. We brought it back to Danvers High School to hope to get some other folks to be able to attend those meetings, because some folks, I know, work. We all work. We take that time once a month to be there and be present and have these meetings and have good conversation and dialogue with the schools. Mr. Obrenzki is one of our liaisons, so we get updates. Mary and Dan come as well and give us updates, and we do talk about different things, where DEEP could help in other ways. Again, over the years, we've had conversations about the teacher grants, that maybe we need to do something different. Teachers are busy, and sometimes the ideas don't, you know, they're so busy doing a lot of other things, are there other ways beyond teacher grants? Maybe we don't do teacher grants, is there other ways that we can support different programs? But it's an ongoing conversation, and as of right now, we'll still continue the teacher grants. And again, we have a website, and we have some social media. We have an Instagram and a Facebook. We do have a Twitter or X, but I haven't really been active on that lately. So we're just on Facebook and Instagram. And try to get out a quarterly newsletter that Dan will share with the community. Just want to go back real quick. Not only is it DECA and the heat press that we supported this year, we supported, this was a great meeting, because they talked about the flying onion, that was a DEEP grant this year, to help them get online, get the infrastructure that was needed. So there was a coordination with the English teacher and Jim Sullivan, and to get them the money so that they could get that as an electronic version. The performing arts, we've done the, oh, they left, but we've supported them in their trips to California, Hawaii, and they support us with the DEEP breakfast. They'll come and perform, so we have a really nice relationship there. This year, some of the teacher grants were for special education, which we have had special education grants all along. But this year, there seemed to be multiple grants coming in from different schools, looking for different things to help the teachers with their students in the classroom. So after going through some of it, Mary and I, we were chatting about it, and we're going to really make a concerted effort to work with the special education or the director of student services to come up with, whether it's, I don't want to say like, I forget what we called it, Mary, but instead of them writing a grant, we would provide, it's not necessarily equipment, but like a kit that all the, or all of the elementary schools that have the special education classrooms and students, that they would all have the same materials, because we had teachers asking for different things at each of the schools, and some of the materials were not necessarily what, you know, we should be using currently. So we're going to coordinate better for next year with the special education or student services director. But I will also say, we have provided grants, especially one this year, for, it was a proposal for sensory integration cart for the Thorpe School. We've also done flexible seating. We also worked with the seventh grade special education team on some furniture or a desk where students could all sit at and write on the desk. Emotional support, we've done things for story grammar marker and autism, language, multisensory implements to support high-needs readers. So the grants that are coming in, we're, again, we're supporting most, all students across the spectrum in all the schools here in the Danvers Public Schools. And again, it's great work that we do, it's hard work that we do, and, you know, I think my crew and I are potentially, you know, needing some new blood to kind of keep us going with this. So again, we're looking for new members that want to come and see what it's all about. And again, just like Alex said, it doesn't have to be people that have kids in the school district, because there's five of us, six of us, that whole board, we don't have kids in the school district anymore. So I've gone to PAC meetings, I've talked to PACs, we've made presentations, I've come to school committee. I get it, people are busy, and we have other obligations, but for DEEP to continue on, we do need the support, so. All I have to say, any questions?
Thank you, Mary Beth. I got one. Well, just, first of all, you've been the heart and soul of DEEP for years, since, you know, before you were on school committee, while you were on school committee, and now. So all kudos to you and your crew. I know you're trying to shift the credit, I get that. But what DEEP has done for the schools over the years is fantastic and really very much appreciated. And, you know, it's funny, when it comes to fundraising, there was a time, it seems like events run their course. It's almost like, you know, first it was the DEEP Ball, then it was the DEEP Hall of Honor, then it became the Wine Tasting, and you get three to five years out of any of those, so.
Try 15, 20.
Yeah.
20 was the ball, 15, or 18 was the wine tasting, but yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
So maybe the pickleball tournament and other ideas will help with the fundraising. But, you know, it would be great to see DEEP be able to continue to sustain itself, and especially, I get the understanding and the feeling like you need new people to be involved, so.
Not going to lie, Eric, I'm getting tired.
Yeah. It's a wonderful opportunity for elementary parents and other parents to sort of get a connection to the school district, to the town, meet people, and make a difference. And most of us here probably started out being involved in our local PAC, and it grew from there. So it's, it's a great thing if you can, if you can do it, just as a, as a citizen, as a way to give something back, it's a great thing. So I hope people will help me.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary Beth.
One of the first things my wife and I went to when we moved to this town was the DEEP Ball, and we had a great time. Thank you for your update. Appreciate it.
Yep. Any other questions? I just want to jump on to Alex's presentation a little bit. Totally support everything that they want to bring into the, into the district, and totally understand the funding of it. However, the meeting last year, when the parents came, and were so passionate and supportive of that, is just a testament to where the community is with what the needs are of the students, because we have great sports, we do have a great arts program, but, and, you know, again, quality and where the support is, and I, coming from, working at the library and understanding, the arts are the first things to get cut, especially like a library where it's a small percentage sometimes, and some folks, and I'm not saying we cut that, but in the big picture, sometimes folks think, well, we can get rid of that, because that's not important. The importance is, is that we have to have something for every student, and the arts are a huge thing, and it is important. And if DEEP can help in some way, certainly can't fund a director position, but if there's some way that we can help beyond and get the word out and all of that, we're more than happy to help with that, so. Okay. Thank you again. Congrats on chairmanship, and thank you for your service.
All right. Just have a brief update of the strategic plan. We're making great progress. I just want to give, again, credit to Mary Warmers, who has really taken the strategic plan, and we're at a point now where, you know, we're pretty solid on the mission and vision, as well as the theory of action, our competencies. There's still a little bit of editing that we're doing to boil down, but we're getting very close. We had some wordsmithing from our last superintendent's advisory council in terms of the vision statement and the competencies as well, but we're getting there, we're getting very close. But I think it's important to note that, you know, these are the backbone components of our strategic plan, because this is a plan that's designed, really, it's a five-year plan, and as we talked about before, you know, mission and vision, you know, the mission, what we do, and the vision is what we aspire to, that brings us to the theory of action for it, it's going to happen, and then what are our true values, the competencies, the portrait of the graduate, that has to go through all K-12 experience here. So we're in good shape here. We'll bring a finalized copy as we get closer in our June meeting. But the portrait of the graduate, the things that we stand for, you know, the graduates with resiliency and critical and creative thinkers, compassionate ethical citizens, empathetic and effective communicators, and skillful collaborators, these are all things that we feel that our students can demonstrate for success with life after school, after high school and the public school experience, wherever they choose to move on. These are important factors and competencies that need to be woven into everything that we do, prepare our students the best that we can. So there's been a lot of really, really good work, and we've cycled down, and really just want to develop next our pillars, which really drive into our strategic objectives and priorities. We have four main pillars, teaching and learning, school-wide systems and structures, family and community partnerships, and district procedures and policies. So we're now at the point where we're working with our administrative team and working with our faculty and staff. This will be the core of the strategic plan in terms of actionable steps to improve our district. And we have, we're starting to build those strands as we speak. If I can give you a quick timeline that we have, so really, this week, the pillars, we feel they're in pretty good shape, and right now, we're looking for, you know, finalizing the feedback, the mission, excuse me, mission, vision, and competencies and theory of action. What we'd like to do is by the end of the week, moving into next week, just have the full draft, really, is just about there. Then we'll go through a whole cycle of review with our principals and their site councils, their school councils. We will offer up some faculty and staff feedback sessions. Our advisory council, our next meeting in May, will take this even further and dig down really deep. And then our administrative council, which is comprised of all of our administrators in the district, will take another feedback through it to finally drill down and bring the final draft to the school committee on June 9th, which, it's been a year-long work, but really, the work, we spent a lot of time building that mission and vision, the competencies. This is really the meat and potatoes, though, the actionable steps to how we improve. And this will build our district improvement plans, and we'll build our school improvement plans in the small, one-year chunks. I think, at this point, I don't know, Mary, you have anything to add, but really, a lot of really, really good work. I won't put Mary on the spot, but.
No, I just want to thank all the stakeholders that have really contributed to helping build this plan. It's been amazing, the feedback we've been getting, and the, you know, how people really dug in, really read closely and carefully on the plan, and really giving good feedback. So again, appreciate the superintendent's advisory council, they've done a lot of work representing the community. We did those forums back, if you remember, in November and December, to get feedback from, and January as well, beginning of January, to get feedback from the community. And then this superintendent's advisory council really helps us keep holding this plan on, so it's been great to have them as the community stakeholders, and again, the teachers as well.
So the whole idea is, once we get this finalized, there will be some more feedback groups that need to take place. Then we will take our retreat, the administrative retreat in June, to really start building the actual action plans, the yearly school improvement plans, that we'll then bring forward in August, when we have our school committee retreat as well, we'll talk more about that so we can hit the ground running. So I don't know if anybody has any questions, but we're getting there.
Thank you very much for that update. I will say, the superintendent's advisory committee, made up of parents and staff, they really have taken this seriously, and it's a really nice cross-section from across this community, and they've done some really, really nice work, so I applaud everybody who's given the feedback. All right, school choice hearing.
Can we talk a little about the process here, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Okay. So this is a public hearing. It's one of the few things we actually do where it's a public hearing, the budget hearing also. So typically, you as chair would declare the public hearing open, take questions and comments from the school committee, and then, to the extent that there are any, take comment from the public. And next would be a motion to close the public hearing, and then a motion to accept or not accept school choice in the vote.
No, I appreciate the guidance. The hearing for school choice is now open. Are there any, are you going to run through the presentation again?
If you'd like, Chair, I'm happy to.
Is that necessary? Any questions or concerns right now from any of you? Is there any comment from the public?
Hi, up again. My name's Julie DeFilippo. I'm the chair of the Danvers CPAC, and I'm the parent of two boys at the Thorpe School that receive IEP services. CPAC sent a letter, I think in early April, before the original meeting was planned, not taking a position, because we understand that, you know, there's lots of different perspectives on this issue within the disability community, but really just outlining some of the pros and cons of school choice for students with IEPs and 504s. For me, I think the funding mechanism is really a true benefit, in my opinion. I think this is a more proactive way of managing cash flow due to the different funding mechanism. So we know that chapter funded, chapter 70 will give the typical about 5K, and the send-in districts will cover below the 60K, and that allows you to do some planning, to proactively through increment funding, which is proactive, instead of the reimbursement model with circuit breaker, which we know is so reactive and just covers extra expenses that keep going and going. This model, I think, would actually allow us to do some of these investments, even regionally. So I like to think about, you know, districts specializing in some of the programming. Hamilton, Wyndham, for example, has a fabulous language-based program that starts in fourth grade and really attracts students regionally. And, you know, I think a lot of districts were trying to figure out what we can do to serve our students with disabilities while managing budgets. If we, you know, coordinated regionally and specialized in certain programs in each district, or instead of spreading our eggs so thin in every district, I think it could help. I also think we all compete for the same talent, unfortunately, every year, and we always all, you know, we come up short, it's hard to fill positions, especially with teachers and staff that have certifications that special ed students need, or training. That could also be helpful in thinking about the model outside that. But, I mean, one of the reasons I really wanted to come here is just to say that I think that the experience within interschool choice, that district choice that other districts have had, is that it is not increasing special education fun, budgets for the receiving districts. Below 60K, you're getting increment funding. And then it's usually, I guess, traditionally for the last couple of years, has been the 60K above, you're getting the reimbursement from circuit breaker funding. So, I mean, it seems small, but I do think, like, trying, starting to shift the model a little bit in some direction could be helpful with this decision. I think, you know, just on a personal level, I'm a graduate of Danvers High School, class of 2002. And I can say, when I went to college, I went for my undergraduate Simmons in Boston. And I felt fully academically prepared, but it became abundantly clear that I wasn't prepared in terms of, I wasn't really used to anybody different than me, not only even visibly, but just different perspectives because they lived in a world and experienced that world in a variety of ideas that I just did not have and I didn't even know that I really didn't have it. And I just think that is, it's a start to bring, you know, include people from other, even just parts of this region or parts of the state that can enrich conversations and curiosity within the classroom. For me, that was one of the biggest benefits of my undergraduate degree. Also, it's just the reality of the workforce today. If we're not preparing students in any level of education to be able to collaborate, communicate is a huge one. We need to be able to learn to communicate between non-verbal speakers and people that speak verbally. That's the reality. And so if we're not doing that, we're not preparing people to live in the real world, work in the real world, and thrive in the real world. So, you know, from a personal perspective, I've seen a lot of benefits of this program. I work in a school district as a school social worker. And I really hope that you can support it. And I know even outside the special education realm, it does, it will bring some extra funding to the district that I think, you know, we could really use and benefit from. So thank you.
Thank you for sharing your perspective. Anyone else in the public? Seeing none, I will close the.
With that, I will move that we close the public hearing.
Second. Second. All those in favor in closing the public hearing? Say aye.
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 Public hearing is now closed. Any discussion on this?
Well, we need a motion to approve. So I'll make a motion to approve accepting school choice for the, I guess it would be the '25, '26 school year. And the superintendent has presented to us the parameters of what we would be doing in terms of accepting students. So that is my motion that we approve it for the '25, '26 school year.
I'll second that. Now, any discussion?
I'll say this. I think that, on its face, it's a great idea. It makes sense from a financial standpoint, but more importantly, we've all received comments from folks with potential objections to it. And I have to say, none of them have been particularly fact-based in the sense that no one's come to us and said, gee, this school district tried it and it was awful and it went badly, or this negative consequence occurred. None, nothing that we received was anything other than, you know, a subtle subtext of new people coming into Danvers. And apparently, we're supposed to be afraid of that. You know, I remember back in, to tell a war story, back in 1982, I was a young town meeting member and was sitting in a finance committee hearing and there was discussion about a low-income housing project. Someone back then on the FinCon made a call, wow, we may not want those people here. And got me angry. And that attitude gets me angry now. We are lucky to live in a wonderful town, but we were not anointed to live in a wonderful town. And the more that we can do to expand the experiences that people have, expand the culture of our town, and that's, you know, talking about the assumption of who the students who come to Danvers will be. My guess is that who they're going to be is students whose families want them to try and get ahead and are willing to drive them to Danvers every day to make that happen. I think you'll find students who are engaged and really want to do well and will contribute to our school community. So I've probably said enough or maybe even too much, but that's my piece. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'd just like to thank the parents that took the time to send emails to us. I appreciate their input. I will say that during my time on the student advisory committee, more than once, we had very robust conversation about this issue. And without question, it was well-received in the room. That was from staff and that was from parents in the room. So, not to parrot what Eric said, but there was a lot of positive feedback in regards to school choice.
So I've been working in schools for 27 years, Danvers being one of the towns. And it was the only town that I did not work in, that I worked in that did not have school choice. The benefits, it would bring students here that want to learn, that want to take advantage of the arts, of, to use Alex being here. You know, going back to when I graduated in '93, the band, the arts, we were always highly regarded. That's just one thing. That's just one piece of the academic life. And before I moved to Danvers, I grew up in Lynn. Moved here in fifth grade and it was a whole different world. And I think that when people hear that, they're not, they're going to picture one thing. You know, they picture the city. That's not what we're going to get. We're going to get kids who want to learn. We're going to get families that want to be part of something and maybe can't afford to move into the town right now, but would like to get here at some point, you know, or there might not be a housing opportunity for that. So I think that academically and socially, I think that it would be a good thing because I guarantee, the parents come and walk through the school, they're not going to be able to pick out which kids belong from town and which kids belong out of town. It's going to just go as business, as business every day.
Yeah, I'll just toss one more thing out there. I think when, traditionally, this school committee or, Danvers is obviously not gone, voted in favor of school choice, but, and I think when this first came up, my knee-jerk reaction was to say no. But then I started to hear different perspectives and really dug into this. I read all the emails from the parents that reached out and I really do think that there's more upside than potential downside. So I, I'm in favor of this. I think it makes a lot of sense for our district right now and, you know, I think it's a, it's a step forward, a little progress, right? Not necessarily living and just doing what has always been done. I like that we're actually making a little change here. So, thank you.
Seeing no more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Unfinished business? Superintendent recommends the transportation policy FBA appendix for a second reading.
Yes, just as mentioned in our last meeting, that we've added to our transportation fleet of non-70 vehicles, which means we have staff members that are utilizing the vehicles to transport students, not for to and from school, but for different events. And it's been quite a savings for us, but it's also a major convenience. But we need to have, in terms of our policy, just, you know, what is needed in order to be endorsed. And we worked their attorney on this, so we would just make this an amendment to policy FBA. So that's basically it.
I just, any more, so move? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. New business, monthly budget. Pam is here. You know, Pam, sorry we made you wait. Next time, just give me a wave, I'll move you up.
I, it's, I understand you have a lot of important things that you have to work through each month, so I appreciate the offer. I'll take that under advisement, I guess, going forward. So this evening, we have an April budget report that does reflect some rather significant increases in the projections to what we expect for tuition and for contracted services in particular through the last stretch of the school year. I had some consultation with that department to sort of gain a deeper understanding of sort of what's been going on there. And I think a lot of it is the fact that we are building programs and those programs are, are still, there are still decisions being made and investment being made in the training, in the staffing, in the design of the programs to be able to fully meet the needs of the students in front of them. And so to help assess that and to, like, help collect the additional data on those students to see what it is they need, there have been some extended evaluations of those students. They have, that is something that, at times, can be done within our own services, but when our programs are sort of still being built, their capacity and their ability to do those evaluations in, at the same time as we're, you know, kind of figuring out where everything needs to go, has required that some students have been having those evaluations done at the collaboratives and sort of outside of the district. But these are important investments in developing the programs and the expectation is that with the use of that insight that we gain from the data collected through the evaluations, the programs will better be able to serve those students and will be able to keep them in district in the long run. So it is a necessary sort of parallel investment, basically, alongside the building of the programs in order to keep more students in district in the long run. So if they have to spend a little bit of time out, sort of having these evaluations now, then come fall, when the programs have been able to be built with their particular needs in mind, they'll be able to remain in our district. There were other increases, I guess, to the projection for homeless transportation, but that is not unexpected. We do, as I mentioned last month, we had just received a payment that I was able to apply to bring that projection down, like an early reimbursement from the state. Now, additional invoicing has been done since then and we have not had another reimbursement. I, we have made inquiries with the state about that process and where it stands. And they're well aware of our intense interest in receiving additional reimbursement. They're just are working through various elements of the emergency assistance financial program, basically, to, so it's still, I think, on their radar, but it hasn't yet been realized. I would say also that while the numbers are concerning, we do have circuit breaker reserve that we can access and we are keeping a very close eye on what is going on with the supplemental budget that is going through the state legislatures to, as we have described before, the amount of circuit breaker reimbursement that came in based on our FY '24 expenses was a, considered a fully funded reimbursement per tuition, but only a partial reimbursement on the transportation. And the supplemental budget that they are, that is working its way through now, would make that transportation reimbursement whole, which would represent another $440,000 of circuit breaker revenue that we should be expecting this year that we could use to apply toward these overages. So we're keeping a close eye on that as well as the FY '26 state budget and how they're going to, there are some amendments that are promising, but we never know until, until it's done. Any questions on anything that I just tried to explain or that you see in front of you?
When you're talking about the additional cost of evaluations, Pam, were we talking dollar-wise? How much of a difference or a hit is this going to be?
I mean, each, each one is, I think, in the $35,000, $40,000 range for the period of time from like February or March through the end of the school year. So I, I mean, it's, it's significant and there are several students that are kind of in that demographic, in that profile.
Forty thousand total for a given month, in other words?
Um, forty thousand for a student for, so what we do, what this represents is sort of a projection out through the end of the year. So if, if that evaluation started in February and is going to run through June, then it is, that encompasses February, March, April, May, June, five months' worth of that service.
Okay. When you say that service, it's an evaluation.
It is.
To see what services might be needed.
I think to collect data on what exactly is needed to meet the students' learning needs and challenges, yes.
Presumably would lead to an IEP, would lead to team meeting and then an IEP.
Yes, I think, I think, yes.
This is the evaluative piece.
I honestly am not as well-versed in the process. Maybe superintendent can speak to it.
Yes, so these particular situations, the students are in an educational plan. It's just to determine if the services that we have are adequate and typically looking at, we do not have the infrastructure currently to run extended evaluations. So we're utilizing an outside entity, the consortium, that would make the evaluation, then obviously team meeting at the end to determine, you know, what would be the best path for the particular student. We're hopeful to be able to provide the services for the students to remain in the district, but right now, we just don't have the infrastructure at this time. And that's part of the piece of building and improving the programming so that we could run those evaluations because those do not qualify for circuit break.
Is it fair to say that those evaluations you're talking about are somewhat atypical in the sense that they're a longer-term evaluation versus what would normally be done?
Typically, it's typically 45 days. That's usually the window to get a good evaluation.
And that includes testing and?
Right, and seeing the student in that particular environment and how they, how they thrive and how they function.
Okay.
Right. And then recommendations come back at the end. We're hopeful that we'll be able to return, you know, many students to our programming, but that is an area that we need to continue building.
So the students who are being evaluated, I don't mean to stick with this, but I want to understand it. Are these students who are already placed out, you know?
Nope, nope.
They're within the system? Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pam. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have the annual review of the school choice. Superintendent's recommendation.
Well, I think we kind of took care of that in the beginning, so I will amend that next year in the agenda. Thank you for that support. They do a wonderful job.
Next, your recommendation of policy, what is that?
ILD.
Student submission to educational survey and research for a first reading. I dropped my glasses.
Yep. So the recommendation is for, first reading of the policy ILD, student submission to educational survey and research. And this policy itself is really a, the school committee association, it's, it's pretty much a boilerplate policy. But, you know, as we conduct youth surveys or other types of surveys, realization is that we currently do not have a policy in our manual. So the recommendation is to bring forth this policy for first reading. I think it's important. The main components, they're clearly spelled out, but really, it's just about being transparent when you do bring surveys and just knowing what parental rights are in terms of the ability to, you know, if a survey is created by a third party, then reports administered or distributed, the parents have the right, upon request, to review the survey or any associated materials that may be utilized for any survey outcomes. I mean, that, that has to, we, we do that, but I think we need, we need this in the policy. The other piece, too, is in terms of the notification of this policy every year for all parents. And then also at the beginning of the year, you know, before we begin, just talk about the surveys and other evaluations that we schedule or anticipate so parents have the opportunity to understand the ability to opt out if they wish. And then really, it's in our best interest as we do, we have opt-outs, to really clearly articulate that and how they look just to protect, you know, the rights of parents. That's the whole bottom line with this particular policy. That's the whole bottom line with this particular policy. And then obviously, at the very end, you know, if parents or eligible students, you know, feel their rights have been violated, they can file a complaint, which they can anyway, but we just really need to have this down in policy for our usage.
No, I really, um, I would say I really appreciate this. I mean, given some of the controversies that have come up, but, you know, having a policy in place is really responsible, and I'm glad that, you know, as a committee, we're getting ahead of it, and thank you for bringing this forward so we can get it out to the parents and avoid any future controversies.
Well, since, since this requires a vote, should we have a motion first before we discuss?
Sure. I, I will move to approve a first reading for discussion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Anyone like to discuss? Who would like to repeat that?
I repeat everything I just said.
Does anyone else have anything? I do. Um, through, through you two, our Superintendent Dr. Bob, which I'm glad to really be able to say that. Congratulations. Um, is it the intent that this policy would apply to any survey that we give?
It, it, it does, yes.
Okay.
You know, I think the important piece is that, you know, if we're gaining information to utilize, and, and parents have the right to really understand, like, what are my students being asked to do?
Totally agree.
Um, so they have the opportunity to review the survey, and, you know, particularly those larger surveys, and we also have other opportunities, uh, other programming that require surveys that, um, help provide information and insight.
So, the lawyer in me is about to come up.
Okay.
And I'm so sorry. So, in the first paragraph, um, it says, uh, "Without the prior written consent of the student's parent or guardian, or of the student, if they are at least 18 years of age, no student shall be required as part of any program wholly or partially funded by the U.S. Department of Education to submit to any survey, analysis, or evaluation." So, it seems to me, if we intend this policy to apply to any survey that we give, we probably don't need or maybe want to remove that qualifier about a program being wholly or partially funded by the U.S. Department of Education. That would then make it apply to any survey that we might be given, if we're paying for it ourselves, whatever it might be. Just a thought.
Yes, um, I mean, this, I can certainly bring this back. I mean, the, the spirit of the policy, you know, and obviously, this was constructed with the other piece, too, and I could certainly run this by Roseanne and the firm, which I always do, but, uh, the piece that's important is that, you know, we do receive federal funding. Um, we, right, we have our entitlement grants and such that we, we receive. So, um, I just want to make sure that we're covered, particularly when you look at the categories of potential items we may or may not even ask. Uh, but again, it gets into the rights of the parents to be informed, so they know that they have the opportunity to opt out, and particularly, if the student's 18 or older, they can opt themselves out.
Yeah, I'm with you. I just want to make sure the policy applies to all of the surveys that we give. And maybe it does the way it's written, so if Roseanne says, hey, this is the way to do it, tell Crane to shut up, and Crane will shut up.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you for, for bringing this to our attention. Um, you know, we, we need to collect data about our students, so we need, we know how to direct resources in order to put things in place that might help them. But with that said, parents should be aware that they have the right to, um, not have this, this subject, such, such surveys. So, I'm glad that we're, we're maintaining, or at least codifying parental rights in, in, in the policy. So, thank you.
And if I can add to the chair, uh, one thing that we've talked about with our mental health team is that, you know, if you look down toward the end by the notification annually at the beginning of the school year, we're looking to put together, uh, a, an evening where we will have a, a forum that does indicate, you know, the, the types of surveys that we do or anticipate, as well as the opt-out, but then really, the bottom line is, why do we do the surveys? How do we apply them? I think that's important to have that dialogue, so the community realizes and understands. And we would have our, our mental health team, as well as our administrative team there. Really, if you openly present, we would film that, just kind of like we do the, uh, the safety forum at the beginning of the year. We're going to use that same format, so then we inform everybody what we're doing, and we'd obviously link that in, so we would send that, that out to those that would not be able to attend, or, you know, have a link so they can watch it at home as well.
Seeing nothing else? All those in favor of first reading?
Aye.
Aye.
Last day of school?
Right. It gives me, uh, great joy to announce, or at least make the recommendation for school committee approval, that the last day of school will be June 18th. We've utilized one snow day in anticipation of, no more snow days. Uh, just would like to bring the recommendation for school committee approval.
Do I have a motion? Motion to approve the last day of school 2024, 2025 to be June 18th.
Second.
Any discussion?
I, yeah, I just want to say that I get out Monday following, and my summer program starts with the rec apartment on Monday, so can we hold it off till then? So, I'm even with you guys. Am I kidding? No, I'm, I'm all for it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I would like to mention it's my birthday that day. Thank you. Uh, next is consented agenda. Motion to approve the school, uh, to approve the school donations, field trip requests, homeschool requests, and personnel memo. So, move. Second.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oh, my bad. Is any discussion? No discussion?
Uh, just real quick, I think that the, uh, young man from Riverside, he donated money that he raised, you know, it's pretty, pretty big of him.
Yeah.
I forget his name off the top of my head, I can pull it up, but, uh, fantastic to hear.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Minutes, the secretary moves to approve and release the minutes from the April 7, 2025 regular meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any communication, um, any communication? None? Legislation update?
Pam did a nice job of, uh, laying out the issues with the supplemental budget. Um, we're still looking, we're going to be continually looking at, you know, what federal cuts may be coming. Recently, there was a, there's discussion, I think it actually has been passed, of cutting quite a substantial sum for youth mental health services. Again, it's sort of a trickle-down effect, because if the federal government isn't funding it, then the state is going to have to try and fund it, which means, you know, do districts get a little less to do other things, because the state have less money to do other things? So, um, keeping a watch on what's happening on the federal level, because it's inevitably going to have some impact on the state. And us.
Agreed. Thank you for that. Any other subcommittee updates?
Actually, yeah, um, I saw the email this weekend that, um, CPAC was awarded the Apple Institute, so we'll be looking forward to that. I know it was probably mentioned, sorry I came in late, I had a game today, but I just wanted to point that out, that I've been paying attention to that, so.
That deserves a second mention.
Yeah, all right. Nope, nope. Thanks, I apologize again, but, yeah, I pay attention.
Anything else?
Uh, through the chair, we have our equity and policy subcommittee meetings this week. Um, the safety committee will meet Monday, which is a week earlier. That's the last meeting of the year, just because Memorial Day is the following Monday, we usually meet the last Monday of the month. Uh, some, some exciting things coming out that we can talk about. The forecast, which is our opportunity to broadcast if there's, God forbid, any type of, uh, serious safety issue. Uh, we have an opportunity that we can send it right away through our devices, uh, increased notification, and also, a lot of the safety drills have gone through very well, but there are a few areas that we need to address, so it's a constant area of work. So, anyway, and I, I mentioned Danvers Cares, they've done a really nice job, um, and, uh, the light in my purple was outstanding.
Anything else? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Good night, Danvers. This meeting is adjourned.